New York Town Central School District Board of Education meeting for February 5th, 2024. Camp motion went to executive session for the purpose of discussing matters made confidential under federal law, Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, including a Section 3214 appeal, seeking advice of counsel discussing matters relating to the engagement of a particular corporation and discussing the employment history of particular pedagogical and non-pedagogical employees.
Sumo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? To public session.
Sumo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now, welcome to the York Town Central School District Board of Education meeting for February 5th, 2024. And can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance that is going to be led by our Brookside students and then remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community that have lost loved ones?
The pledge will be led by Georgia and Penelope.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Hatter, I know Brookside's supposed to be here, but I don't know if I see students or animals.
This is great. Everybody's all dressed up in costume. It's so nice to see you all here tonight. So, parents, families, I'm sorry that we were a little delayed coming out of our executive session. We apologize for keeping you waiting for a few minutes. And students, I am so happy to see you here. This is going to be terrific. So at this time, we're going to hear about a performance that our third grade students are going to be putting on, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Cassarini to introduce tonight's presentation.
Okay, don't give it away. No, thank you for having Brookside here to showcase some of the wonderful things that we do. Social emotional development of our students has become paramount in the York Town district and many districts across the region. It's always been important to me personally as an educator over the years because I've seen the degree in which the social emotional realm can affect a child's educational success. I'm gratified that as a district, we've gone through a philosophical and practical transformation in which instead of just reacting to the social emotional needs of our students, we've become more proactive with all of our students and embedding their social emotional growth into their academic growth. We've accomplished this through academic work, classroom lessons, participation in our PBIS program throughout the building, school-wide events, community events. Our students have learned to expand their SEL skills through assemblies and in the special areas. If you go into any classroom today, you'll see students practicing social awareness skills, developing relationship skills, and becoming connected to others. In just two days from now, our third grade students will be performing a musical play for their families and for our school, which shows the culmination of this learning experience. We're so excited tonight to bring you not only a sampling of this musical play, but some of the student reflections of the meaning of the play and what they have learned. So you can't beat that. We're going to have a little touch of Broadway, we have our youngest students, and we have a great social message. I introduce to you our amazing, wonderful musical director, Mrs. Marina Berger.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I lost my voice. It's a music teacher without a voice, but I'm going to try my best. My name is Marina Berger, and I'm the lucky music teacher of these wonderful third graders. We would like to share with you tonight just a little bit about the musical, The Unity Tree, that we will be presenting on February 7th. A musical is a form of theatrical performance that combines songs, spoken dialogue, acting, and choreography in order to tell the story. And in our school, we take social emotional education very seriously. Our goal as teachers is not only to educate our students, but also to help them become good citizens. When choosing a special program, I always think about the positive ways it will impact my students. So I chose the musical, The Unity Tree, because the two main characters, the puppy and the kitten, they teach us all a very important lesson about accepting each other's differences and living together in peace and harmony. And now, let me introduce our amazing students.
Hi, my name is Haley, and I'm from Mrs. Donas class.
My name's Ella Peterson, and I'm from Mrs. Donas class.
My name's Finley Doc, and I'm from Ms. McLeer's class.
My name is James de Blazi, and I'm from Mrs. Donas class.
My name's Austin McDonald, and I'm from Mrs. McLeer's class.
My name is Johnny, and I'm from Mrs. McLeer's class.
My name is Max, and I'm from Mrs. Donas class.
My name's Georgia, and I'm from Mrs. Rampino's class.
My name is Aubrey, and I'm from Mrs. Rampino's class.
My name is Leo Eastman, and I'm from Mrs. Rampino's class.
My name is Jack Longobardi from Mrs. Rampino's class.
My name is Howard Estasi from Mrs. Herbie's class.
My name is James Vannor from Mrs. Perdigliozy and Mrs. Triolo's class.
My name's Alexa Johnson from Mrs. Perdigliozy and Mrs. Triolo's class.
My name is Maria Almeida, and I'm from Mrs. Perdigliozy and Mrs. Triolo's class.
My name is Sienna Cabra, and I'm from Mrs. Perdigliozy and Mrs. Triolo's class.
My name is Penelope Cappuccetta from Mrs. Lucalsey's class.
In the musical, The Unity Tree by Tressa Jagings, we are taught about love, acceptance, and understanding.
We are so excited to share this play with you.
In the play, there was a tree with a long stripe down its middle which separates two towns, Catville from Dogburg.
Catville and Dogburg share one common thing. When it snows, each town gets bigger because it literally snows cats and dogs.
their own kind. But what they don't know is this is not the way it's supposed to be.
They became quick friends, but when the other animals of Catville and Dogburg discovered their friendship, they were upset.
They have to teach the young kitten and puppy that they are supposed to be enemies.
And that's just the way that it is.
But when the two youngsters show everyone that they are happy with being friends, the others are okay.
Don't want to be your enemy. I'd rather be happy with you. Living in harmony. I'd rather not be bad. Don't want to feel so angry. I'd rather be alone. Then we could all be free. Free from war and war paint. This is our chance and last. We don't have to be what we don't want to be. Be the goal of the past, of the past.
The puppy and kitten had taught us that such a bond is possible for the others as well. Living and working together, helping each other and sharing ideas to solve problems is good for cats and dogs. It turns out it is good for us as people, too. In our story, the cats and dogs embrace their differences and accept each other the way they are.
The kitten and puppy taught us a lesson on how to get along with other people who might be different in some way. The kitten and puppy showed us how to work and live together with others despite different points of view and opinions.
The stripe is removed from the tree showing that cats and dogs can live together and be happy.
A new sign is attached which reads, "The Unity Tree. From now on, all the citizens of Catville and Dogburg were united as one and live happily ever after."
United we live in harmony, harmony. We live with this plan, to evolve word hand in hand. To create a more whole of unity, unity. We will take it and make it together. We will build up a home in harmony. We will work together. We will live together. We will sail together in unity. United we stand.
We are so happy to tell you about what we are learning about relationships, getting along, and how to live peacefully.
We want to thank Mr. Cassarini, Mrs. Ammerling, Dr. Hatter, and the Board of Education for inviting us here tonight.
We especially want to thank Mrs. Berger for teaching us about music, singing, acting, and how we can be the best Brookside Bulldogs we can be.
We are so excited for our concert.
I don't know if I can speak. Boys and girls, that was so terrific. What I heard while you were all singing, I'm thinking about, right now, we're in February. In just a few months, you'll be finishing out your time at Brookside. I don't want to rush it, but just in a few months, you'll be finishing at Brookside and getting ready for a new, bigger school at Cron Pond. And the lessons that I took away here were friendship, kindness, accepting, everyone getting along. And then there was a quote from one of your songs, "We don't have to be what we don't want to be." I think those lessons are going to be important next year when you get to Cron Pond and you make all new friends. I think that that's absolutely terrific. I am so proud of you all. Parents in the audience, first of all, thank you. It's not easy to come out on a Monday night. I know you've had all long days, and there are bedtime routines, and homework, and things that need to get done so that you can get ready for tomorrow. So I appreciate you being here. I appreciate the partnership. You're your children's first teachers, and we appreciate the opportunity to work with your children each day. They're amazing. I think you already know that, but if you don't hear it enough, your children are absolutely amazing. But I'll also share that, I'm sure, parents, you noticed this as well in the audience, in addition to all the great lessons that they're learning, and they are terrific, the public speaking that your children just did tonight. They got up in front of a room of adults, and some people they may recognize, some people they don't recognize, and they confidently presented themselves, and they sung in front of you, they read in front of you. I bet there are many of us in the audience who would rather not do that, and, boys and girls, you did such a great job of that tonight. I am so proud of you. I want to take a moment to also, so, parents, thank you for letting us work with your great children. Teachers, thank you for coming out and for all that you do. I just want to acknowledge the teachers and the staff who are in the room this evening. I see some in the front row. I don't want to start naming names because I'm afraid that if I, I'm afraid I'll leave somebody out who's not in the front row. But, Mr. Cassarini, Dr. Sandor, thank you so much for everything that you're doing. Miss Berger, thank you for all of your efforts. I am just so impressed and so heartened by what I saw here tonight, and good job. Keep it up.
Students, I think you have some board members that are really proud of you, and I want to say some stuff, and I know Lisa probably wants to start.
You guys are amazing. I love your costumes. I love that you have your card with your words there so that if you can't remember them, it's right there. And I especially love the way you shared that microphone so seamlessly. You went from introducing yourselves into your speaking. You guys are great. I'm so happy you came. Thank you for coming.
Sure.
I think you had such a beautiful message. When you said, "We want to live in a world free from war and free from hate," I mean, what a perfect message to put out there. And I really felt like, as third graders, you really understood it and knew what it was meant, and the words that you integrated throughout the rest of your presentation and your song and talking about unity is really what we need to listen to and where we need to head. So thank you for coming. Your message was very, very powerful.
Freshman?
Well, I just want to say thank you for bringing joy to our meeting this evening. I wish the rest of our meeting was just as much fun. I loved your costumes, the way you sang, you know, really great job. And to Mrs. Berger, I mean, you're a gem. You know, you foster music with the youngest of the children. My own children had you, and one is still playing in college, so thank you for all you do.
Catalina?
Everybody did such a nice job, and Lisa, I saw the same thing, sharing, so I think cats and dogs can be friends. I saw two friends really helping each other out, so thank you. And just incorporating this message into music really is just a different mold to learn, and everybody did such a great job.
Pete?
No. Thank you to the students, of course. Great job, and to the staff and Mr. Cassarini. And I'm all for foregoing the rest of the board meeting and seeing the rest of the children, so, here, here.
When the children come, yeah. The children coming to present us is always the best part of our meetings, and it always is a great reminder of why we are here, so thank you for reminding us of why we do what we do, and it's to make sure that you guys have the best education possible. Parents, thank you for bringing them here, and thank you for everything you do because you have wonderful, wonderful children. Thank you.
So at this point, we have a lot of meeting left. We have two more presentations tonight, not as fun as this one, but what we'll do, just in recognition of the children here and your time, you're welcome to stay, but we're going to take a brief five-minute intermission in case you want to depart for the evening. Thank you for coming. We appreciate you being here. Have a great evening.
Now, you can't top it. Okay, we are up to public comment. Evette, did anybody sign up to speak to our first public comment? No? Okay. So, Ron, we'll go back to you for the education report.
As part of our meetings this year, we've been presenting monthly our education reports, and the community will recall, we've had presentations on pre-K, we've had presentations on athletics, and we had a presentation this evening, and we've had some others, and some others are in store. So we look forward to continuing to keep the community apprised of some of the educational offerings and opportunities that we have here in the district. With regard to this evening's presentation, there are some incredible joint ventures that are happening between our Pupil Personnel Services Department and our Technology Department. Now, technology integrates with all of the departments in the district, whether it's facilities, curriculum, the business office, and so on. But there's a special partnership between Pupil Personnel Services and Technology that I thought it would be appropriate to feature this evening. And so at this time, I'm going to invite the Director of our Pupil Personnel Services Department to the podium to begin the presentation, Caroline Almeda.
Caroline?
Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Carbone, trustees, Dr. Hatter, Ms. Ammerling, and Ms. Stan Philipowicz. Honored to be here tonight to tell you a little bit about what we do and how we do it, and it couldn't be better than to go after such a wonderful group of children. I know you are wishing for some more song. We're not going to quite do that for you, but you'll probably be grateful, given at least my singing voice. So, thank you all for having us. What we do is we provide service to students, and I know in the group that just came here and present to us, some of the students in that very group receive services through the PPS department. And one of the most beautiful things about it is, you can't tell when a group of children is presenting who needs what types of services. And all of the service that we provide is done through a collaborative team approach. So I wanted to share a little bit about that and about the people who make up our department. I'm going to see if I can get this to work. There we go. We have so many members on our team. We have psychologists and special education teachers, related service providers such as occupational therapists, physical therapists, and we have others who help support us, behavioral specialists, our school nurses, vision specialists, hearing specialists, and we work, as Dr. Hatter was saying, in collaboration with all of the other departments here in the district. Our Technology Department is very close to us. We do a lot with them. We're going to highlight some of that tonight. We also work with our Guidance Department, the Business Office, Human Resources, Curriculum and Instruction, Transportation, Registration, and Facilities, and even Athletics. I know most of you are familiar with our Pioneer League. So lots of things that are near and dear to our heart. I wanted to start off with a little bit about some of the numbers, because I know when we give presentations like this, there's always an interest in hearing about the students that we serve a little bit in a broad sense. We do have currently, and this is as of December, 88 Committee on Preschool Special Education students, and 660 special education students, 23504 students, and we service 19 students at other locations such as St. Patrick's School. Total students served, excuse me, is 978 as of December, and that number changes as the needs change. And I know in the past, we've spoken a little bit about the different disability types that we serve and the classification categories, and there are 13 different classification categories, and we serve children of all different abilities and needs and disability categories. What we've noticed recently is that the two main classification categories, other health impairment and learning disability, continue to be the primary disability categories for students. We have more students served under those categories than any other categories, and that's in keeping with what we see regionally and also nationally. Some people have asked, especially in recent years, about the number of referrals that we've seen, especially since COVID, and we have had an increase in referrals since COVID. The biggest increase we saw was in the '21-'22 school year, where we saw 270 referrals that year. The following year, in '22-'23, we saw 204 referrals, and as of the midpoint of this year in December, we saw 103 referrals. And roughly 100 students with disabilities graduate each year. So that number can fluctuate as we go through different parts of the year. Some of the programs and supports we have in place for children include our Integrated CoTeach program. That program serves the majority of students. It's a general education classroom with two teachers, a general ed teacher and a special ed teacher, as well as some other service supports, sometimes a CTA or a classroom aide. We have special class programs, including our 812 program that you know of, that we're so very proud of, and we have a full continuum of services here, consultant teacher, resource room, and every related service on the continuum as well. And it takes all of our services to meet the needs of our children, and we do that by working together with all of our different departments and providers. And we also provide support to individuals such as bus drivers, bus monitors, and to our school nurses. We are proud of the professional development and the training that we've done and the resources that we bring to parents and to teachers and to others in the community. And we work together with community organizations, too, like the Office for People with Developmental Disabilities, to try to bring in some resources and some supports for parents as well. There are some innovations and refinements that we're working on in the department this year. One of the, and again, not as interesting as hearing a third grade play, but the document repository has been a big shift for us this year. Again, we're not, it's hard to follow the act that you guys just saw, but the document repository has been helpful for us. It's an efficiency and a really strong record-keeping change that we've made. Instead of having paper files for every student, this year, all of their files are being converted going forward into electronic format. We've also been doing a lot of work with expanding the use of the parent portal. By the end of this year, we expect all 504 plans and special ed documents to be available to parents on that parent portal. We've added progress reports to it already, and there's a lot of other innovations and efficiencies within the department that we've been working on this year, a little bit behind the scenes. We've spent a lot of time working with the school nurses this year and bringing in other supports for our schools and our buildings to meet the medical needs of students as well, and we've added to our substitute nurse list to make sure that we have coverage when we need it. And we're looking forward to the second half of the year where we continue to collaborate with all of the different departments to help to further support our students and to meet the changing needs that come our way. And we do have a Twitter now called X Page, and we like to feature that because all of our special events, we post on there, from our Pioneer Games to our professional development and special days of celebration that we have coming up to honor our children. And I couldn't be more proud of the work that the folks in our department do, and like I said, it's an entire team of people, and none of the work that we do would be possible if it weren't for all of us working together, both within the PPS department and with all of the other departments in our district. And so with that, I'm so pleased to hand over the presentation to Kelly Rudick, our Assistant Director of PPS, and the Technology Department, Amanda Eberle, Jen Forsberg, and Vicki Feigl, who are going to talk a little bit about how technology and PPS have worked together this year. Thank you.
Hello. I'm going to make sure I'm speaking into the mic. Hello, everyone. I'm really pleased to present a little bit about that partnership that Caroline was just speaking about, and she makes a very good point that we not only partner with technology, but a lot of departments every day to do what we do to support our students here in Yorktown. So, we're pleased to share. So we're pleased to share a little bit about that tonight. As part of our commitment to supporting students with disabilities in Yorktown through individualized education programs and Section 504 plans, we really pride ourselves on being responsive to the changes in student needs. We continue to identify opportunities to promote our students' independence and ultimately their access to be independent in the classroom and demonstrate all the wonderful skills they have. We also want to ensure that our teachers are prepared to meet the changes in needs and implement 504 plans and IEPs with fidelity. This photo on the slide actually showcases a wonderful professional development opportunity that we delivered to our secondary teachers in Yorktown in November, which highlighted best practices and implementation of program modifications and testing accommodations, which was really wonderful. And it was really well received from the staff. So we couldn't have done that without that partnership with our technology department again. Some of the other ways that we support our students with disabilities in Yorktown through technology include augmentative alternative communication devices, better known as AAC devices. We also utilize Google Read and Write and Google Voice Typing Tools as other tools to promote access and ultimately grow the students' independence in the classroom. Bookshare is another incredible tool, access to audiobooks really, for students. Through the use of Bookshare, we're able to load books on a virtual bookshelf for students to, again, promote their access in the classroom, regardless of whatever need they may have, specifically in the area of reading. They're now able to participate with all students in the classroom and, again, promote their independence. Another fantastic tool, which I personally use all the time, is Canva. Our teachers and related service providers are experts in this. And this is a way for teachers to create visual supports, graphic organizers, different tools to support students in the classroom. And then our students are also using Canva quite frequently to create their own presentations and, again, promote and demonstrate their understanding in the classroom and their independence. Lastly, eDoctrine has a variety of uses that we utilize it for in Yorktown. Tonight, we'll talk a little bit about eDoctrine as an assessment tool. And Amanda and Vicky have really helped us in that piece as far as how we support our students being prepared for that shift to computer-based testing. And that is really something that's on our minds in preparing students with disabilities for that shift. I have a wonderful little picture here, if the remote wants to work, of our students using, uh-oh. There we go, of our students utilizing their AAC devices, those augmentative alternative communication devices. These devices really become their voice in the classroom. And, again, we could not do that without the never-ending support of our technology department and our technicians specifically. For whenever we, you know, have an issue and we need to troubleshoot it, they are there whenever we need them. There it goes again. Hold on. Yvette, this thing doesn't like me. There we go. Oh, one more. I mentioned a little bit about those shifts to computer-based testing. We want to be prepared for that. And as of 2024, all of our New York State assessments for grades five through eight, English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science will shift towards computer-based testing. And that's on our mind as far as preparing our students with disabilities for those types of assessments. In 2023, the PSAT was administered as a computer-based assessment. And in 2024, the SAT will also shift towards a computer-based assessment. Amanda is now going to speak a little bit more about eDoctrine as an assessment tool and the ways that we can support our teachers and our students with that tool. Thank you.
Good evening. eDoctrine is a tool that teachers and students can use and utilize every day. It allows teachers to build assessments in the platform and collaborate among their peers in the building, across buildings, and district-wide to allow sharing throughout the district. It also allows real-time data to be seen by the teachers. Students can take online assessments, and teachers can have it up in front of them and see what question the students are on. If students are, if all of their students are getting a certain question wrong, you can link certain standards to questions so you can see if it's across district or if it's just maybe I have to go back to a period and teach that standard over again because I skipped it that day, or the bell rang early and we had to leave early. The real-time data reporting is, can be run at a district level. It can be run at a teacher level or a whole school level to see how we can tailor our teacher-led instruction to each individualized student. It also allows accommodations to be put in for those students individually. So you can have a classroom full of students. Five can have test read with the computer read, just like they would on a New York State assessment. And a teacher can actively give their students all the accommodations they deserve. These are just a small sample of the accommodations and tools that can be used in edoctrine. The ones highlighted in red are the ones that are available to all students on the New York State assessment. And any assessment that is created by a teacher in edoctrine in Yorktown, those skills and tools are automatically built in for all of our students to use, to get used to using before they take the New York State assessments. And now there's a short video. A short video of what a student will see when they, or can see when they open edoctrine for a test. Once a student starts a test in edoctrine, a new Chrome browser will open containing just the assessment. All students will have access to the following tools. A reading ruler, a magnifier, highlight mode. They have the ability to zoom in or zoom out and to review a question later. This will mark the question to allow the student to go back to that question. They can leave a note on the question. And they can use the X-out-answer option. Students with the accommodation set of test read will have the ability to have the passage and/or question read to them. Audio screen. And pause where they would like to, and start where they would like to. Students that need a language translation also have that ability with Google Translate built in. Students can go to the next question. And students will also have free response text boxes that mirror the New York State assessments. And now Jennifer Forsberg is going to speak a little bit more on how we collaborate with other departments.
Hi, good evening. I have the challenge of, in one slide, explaining how the technology and data department collaborates with all of the other departments in the district. It's one large benefit of working in technology and data is we get to work with every school and every department in the district. So this slide is a snippet, a piece of that work. One area that we collaborate with is the facilities team on all of our installations. In fact, we share a Google Sheet where there's probably six of us now who collaborate on that document every time there's a new installation of a TV or a Sharp or an Access Point or something. We also work with the PA systems with them in any asset disposal. Within the Athletics Department, we help support their huddle program with the integration into the cameras. And we repurposed iPads into the hands of coaches and the Athletics Department. Within the Business and Human Resources Departments, we support all kinds of audits, the InVision HR Finance System and any of those updates, as well as an automatic sync we have set up right now to onboard and offboard staff efficiently. We also support the technical needs within Transportation and Food Services, including registration, all IT support, and new migration to a cloud-based food services program. And within Curriculum and Instruction, we support all data and technology for the K-12 instructional and administrative hardware and software, including our new data dashboard, EduClima, and also rostering classes through the use of ClassLink. Thank you.
So, and one slide doesn't necessarily capture the fact that there are 3,400 students, families, 600 staff, who Jen's department provides support for, the digital sign-out front, the cable channel, the scoreboards that you've interfaced with, all the critical infrastructure to make a wireless environment in schools, the bus cameras, and I can go on and on. I know Jen can go on and on. So Jen, in terms of how many devices we're talking about, it's got to be...
Well, technically, one-to-one, so 3,400 student devices and then however many staff. So teacher devices would be really for anyone, plus labs and extra devices.
A lot of devices.
Forty-five hundred, probably.
And I wanted to share with you this evening the presentation. So Amanda and Vicky work in our data department. And they've delivered a lot of professional development to our faculty and staff over the course of these last couple of years. And Kelly is our Assistant Director of PPS, and they've worked together to roll out this program within edoctrine that makes it, that makes providing testing accommodations more readily available for our students. Anyone in the classroom and anyone in the audience viewing who is a classroom teacher who has to implement the accommodations will know the challenge of implementing the modifications and doing it well at a high level. And to be able to leverage technology and some of the latest features within that technology to deliver those services, whether it's process of elimination, which is X-ing out an answer, note-taking, highlighting, zooming in, flagging to come back later, leaving a note for their teacher, or having the question read, is just absolutely remarkable. So I thought it was great to feature that for the board and for our community. And I also thought it was important to hear a little bit about some of the, where we are in special education in PPS, especially as we get into the budget development season, and where we are with regard to technology. So if you, if the board has any questions, we have Caroline, Kelly, Jen, Amanda, Vicky are here. And obviously, Deirdre, Lisa, and I are here as well to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Pete, I'll start with you.
Looking at the number of students we serve, I calculate roughly 29% of the student population gets some sort of service. Is that consistent with, I guess, the county? Is it unique to us? Has it grown over the last several years? That's like three questions.
All good questions, though, and those are the questions that a lot of people have. And I appreciate that you asked. Our numbers do coincide with the numbers of other districts in the region. And the number is just about 27% overall, although it does fluctuate during the year. Our classification rate, as described by the state, refers to the number of students with special education plans. And that is currently 18%, which is high by the standard that we had set five years ago. But by current standards, it's in line with what we see in the other districts in the state and in this region.
Kedley?
Hi. My question's a technology question. So the shift towards computer-based testing, Jen, can you explain what devices our students will be taking the state test on? Regular Chromebooks, touch, you know, and are we up to date with the devices?
Sure. So currently, we already started the phase-in process of having all students K through eight with a touchscreen Chromebook. This year, right now, it is up, it's just third grade. But for next year, we'll be phasing that in. But for the, to answer your question about computer-based testing, for our fifth graders, we do have plans to have them use a touchscreen Chromebook, whether we purchase them ahead of getting them in the summer. So instead of July 1, we would get them before that, if they can come in time. Or we are able to borrow them from classrooms of a non-testing grade. So the plan is to have fifth grade use a touch device, and sixth through eighth are using regular Chromebooks.
And also for the SATs?
For the SATs, that's still a large conversation on the tech side. I've been working with John in the high school. So it's really, at this moment, it's open, where students from other districts can bring in any device. And our own students will have their Chromebooks. So there's still a lot of questions that are unanswered that we're monitoring closely. But any student who would need one, of course, would have one here. And I believe the College Board is offering a program that any student can request a device from the College Board as well.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. One, do you see, and this is going back to the special ed section, do you see a change in the types of needs that are arising, like just beyond, you know, the numbers and the percentages? Or is it pretty much been the same in the last five years and you think it'll stay the same? And then the second question I have related to this is, so since the CPSC percentages look to be much lower than the CSC numbers, like do we expect that maybe over the course of the next few years, the number of the incoming special ed students, like the overall number might decrease? But then we might, are we seeing a higher increase on the needs? Like, can you give us a sense of where we are?
Yes, thank you. I'd be happy to. And I think we have noticed a considerable trend in the needs that we're seeing, both here in our district and regionally. Since COVID especially, we've seen a tremendous increase in the social-emotional needs of students and the behavioral needs. And we've also seen a large increase in medical needs, I would say, overall. We have more and more students who have type 1 diabetes than ever before, for instance, and other medical conditions. So I think those are the two areas that are growing the most, both social, emotional, behavioral. And the rate of autism, I think we've spoken about this before, continues to grow nationally and even internationally. The percentage of individuals with autism has been on the rise for many years now. And I think part of what we're seeing too, I like to look ahead to some of the research that's coming out, especially as we look at children. And I think that in the future, we'll see a higher number of, an even higher number of medical conditions coming out. And part of that would be attributed, I think, to overall wellness and diet. So I think there are some interesting findings out there on the research. And there's a lot that goes into the disabilities that we see. It's typically a combination of genetic factors as well as a lot of environmental influence. And I've been really focusing a lot on those environmental influences. It's fascinating to really read about. And your other question in terms of the CPSC numbers, we, this year, for the first time in five years, saw a slight drop in the number of four-year-olds referred to special education. And I'm not quite sure what to attribute that to. But I do know that as students come into kindergarten, first grade, second grade, the rigor and the expectations, especially academically, grow for them. And so in preschool, you wouldn't see, for instance, a student with a learning disability. Whereas once students come into kindergarten, first, second, and they're exposed to the academic curriculum, that's where those types of disabilities would come through. And so the number is expected to rise as students move through their elementary years.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, my question is about the support that you provide. Your audience is very large. You provide support to students, parents, staff, and others. It's probably more obvious, the support you provide, more obvious to us, the support you provide to students and staff. Could you expand or tell us a little bit more about what kind of support you provide to parents?
She should stand there.
Yes, I'd be happy to. One of the main related services that we provide to parents is called parent counseling and training. So we work a lot with parents on helping them to understand their child's disability and then bringing resources to them, and collaborate with them and their outside service providers to make sure that students have all of the supports that they need. We've also worked and partnered with our SEPTA to bring in guest speakers, like Office for Developmental, people with developmental disabilities, and other transition agencies to help as students get older and prepare to leave high school and move to post-secondary. So a lot of different, different supports in place for parents, and just always making ourselves available. We have such great parents in this community, and they, they're so kind, and when they call and they need help, and they're looking for resources or for support, it's always a pleasure to, to help guide them.
Thank you.
Lisa?
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you to the five of you for everything you do for our community. It is very much appreciated, what you do currently and how you look forward to continue to improve, so thank you.
And I think it was great to see how they all collaborate. I mean, we don't have standalone departments. You may have a separate name, but everybody works in collaboration across departments for the better of the students, and I'm really grateful for everything you do, so thank you. Ron, did you have any follow-ups?
No, just thank you. I work with these great professionals every day, so I see what they do day in, day out. I know Deirdre works very closely with, with all members of the department, as does Lisa. So we've got a great team, and I'm just grateful for the opportunity to work with them. And like Lisa said, thank you for all that you do. I say it to you often, but thank you for all that you do for our kids. So that, I don't have any additional questions unless anyone else has any questions.
I just want to thank Jen, because you know, anytime you call Jen or you call Yvette to get something from Jen, she's right there. We needed, we need her for technology for tonight's meeting at last minute, and we came in and it was all set up. So that's what technology does for us. They just are always there whenever you need them, so thank you.
All right. Thank you all. So thank you.
Thank you.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
We're gonna go on to the superintendent's reports. Back to you, Ron.
So if it's okay with the board, just given the crowd that we have this evening, I was wondering if we would do, if it would be okay with you, if we did things a little bit differently tonight, in that perhaps, so I've given now about seven presentations on our bond project, 35 slides, and rather than giving that same presentation again, which is available seven different times on our website for anyone in the community to view, and I would encourage you to visit those presentations, because the questions sometimes are different. But if it's okay with you, I'm happy to deliver the same presentation that I've been delivering. But I was also, in lieu of that, I was thinking about addressing the five big questions that I've received from the community, because there are questions that have come up in many of the presentations, and I thought maybe this is the opportunity to, where this is the last meeting, that will be posted to our website prior to the bond vote. We do have another meeting on the 12th, but I just don't know if that will be up in time for the polls opening at 7:00 AM. So I thought I'd take this opportunity to address the five most prominent questions that have been delivered to me and to members of my team. So if that's okay with you.
Yeah. Is it possible, when you get to this part of the meeting in the video, there could just be a link to the presentation? Anybody who came here expecting to see it, they could just click on a link and be taken to another presentation, and then you go on with your questions? You should have asked Jen that before she left.
We've got Brian here.
Brian, that's his problem.
And the answer to that's yes.
I didn't put the link in the comments below the video, but click on video to get a link.
No, but even if just has the...
A heading that reads, click on the comment below for one of the presentations.
Yeah, does that make sense to you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So the most common question that I have received throughout this entire process is why not French Hill? We have a building idled, it's sitting there, it's available for use, why would we not just occupy French Hill and use that for an additional school building? And there are so many facets to that conversation, but ultimately, all roads lead to it being most fiscally responsible, and I would argue educationally responsible, to expand upon our existing buildings rather than to open up French Hill. When we look at the upfront costs, anyone who has been following the presentations has heard me say that the cost of new construction and the cost of renovations are comparable. Yes, we are using French Hill for our pre-K program, but please understand, our pre-K program does not come with the technology demands that our regular instructional program has. In fact, there are no devices in our pre-K program, and the Wi-Fi is only limited to the office space. So the technology infrastructure is not there. There's no food service program right now in our pre-K program. So the kitchen, the servery, all of the considerations that we would have in operating a school were not a consideration in reopening French Hill for our pre-K program. The infrastructure with regard to the bus loops is not something that was updated. So we don't have transportation at French Hill for our pre-K program, so that would make sense that we had not made that investment to upgrade the facility from that regard. We don't have school buses going through the facility, unless it's a small amount for drop-off and pickup at some of the daycare providers that are housed there. The other part is, we do have a lot of community resources housed at French Hill that would be displaced, whether it's YAC, whether it's a YAC wrestling program, Alliance for Safe Kids Ask program, the music school, Children's Corner, and our pre-K program, and 1010 Recreation are all housed within that complex in addition to a teacher center. With regard to the other part of that conversation, which is the recurring costs, if we were to open French Hill, we would need a principal, an assistant principal, two office staff, a nurse, an assistant in the nurse's office, two daytime custodians, two evening custodians, psychologist, social worker, SRO, outdoor security, indoor security, and we haven't put one classroom teacher in that building yet. So with all of the staffing needs to make that building commensurate with our other schools, and the additional bus run that we would need, we anticipate that those annual recurring expenses would be about $3 million. If we build on Mohansec Brookside and Crompon, which is part of our plan, we already have a principal. We have great principals. We have great assistant principals, great clinicians, great staff in the buildings, great SROs, great security personnel. We may have to add another cleaner in each of the schools to account for the new wings that are being added, but that's a far cry from the $3 million annual recurring costs that we would anticipate in reopening French Hill. And then who goes to French Hill? That's the other conversation that really hasn't been had. Do we reconfigure our grade levels? Do we redraw the lines? Those are all educational considerations that would be very disruptive to our students. So the thought of opening French Hill really doesn't make sense educationally, it doesn't make sense fiscally, and that's where the steering committee and certainly our administrative team arrived, and the board as a whole, arrived at the conclusion to add on to our existing buildings. With regard to the second question that I've received is Prop 1 has no tax impact. Do I have to vote on that? I actually got that question this evening, because there's an implication that because there isn't a tax increase, it does not need to be voted upon. That's not accurate. Each proposition is separate, and both propositions have to be voted upon. That question has come up at every single presentation that I have delivered on this topic. The other part of that question is, well, if I vote yes for Prop 2, does that not automatically imply that I'm supportive of Prop 1? And that's not the way the law works. Any voter who is going to come out on February 13, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM at French Hill, will need to cast their vote for both propositions. If Proposition 1 passes, and only if Proposition 1 passes, then the results for Proposition 2 can be considered. So Proposition 2 cannot pass unless Proposition 1 passes, and both votes, although they'll be on the same ballot, the vote to each proposition has to be cast. The third question is, well, what's the tax impact? That has come up often as well. And on Proposition 1, our fiscal advisors were here at our last Board of Education meeting in January, and they were very clear in saying that Proposition 1 would have no added tax impact. Proposition 2, on a home that's at the average assessed home value in Yorktown, which is $10,150, the average, the home at the average assessed value would experience a $78 increase annually, for approximately $6.50 each month. So if your home has an assessment, and I'm not suggesting your taxes are $10,150, it's the assessed value of your home. If your home is assessed at a lesser value than the anticipated amount of the tax increase for Proposition 2, would be less. Obviously, if it's assessed higher than $10,150, it would be higher than $78. That chart that indicates some of the more commonly assessed home values in our town is posted to our website as part of the presentation that I've delivered previously. The last two questions, well, I'll take them in order. The first is timeline. Why is it taking so long? Why will this project take five years to complete? Well, in fact, it's gonna take more than five years to complete, because the fifth question, which is what's next? What happens if the bond, or when the bond passes on February 3, if the bond passes on February 13? Well, what happens is, we go into a 12-month design period, where we'll engage faculty and staff and students to hear about their experience, their hopes and vision for the facilities that we have here in Yorktown that are part of the bond. We acknowledge that not every want, need will be addressed in this bond. When we first went at the bond, the budget was over $60 million, which is something that would have resulted in a tax increase in Proposition 1, and that, we heard very loudly from the community, was not something that they would consider. So we pared down the project, we created a second proposition, ultimately Proposition 1 would fall into a range that allows it to be tax-neutral. But what's next is a 12-month design period followed by a six-month review period that takes us to the spring of 2025, when we would begin construction after a bid process. With regard to why so long, and that's the final question that I'll address this evening, unless, of course, the board has questions that they'd like to have addressed, the why so long part comes down to three factors. First of all, in order to make this tax-neutral, we have to borrow on a schedule that replaces existing debt. So we need to do that in a way that captures the debt that's retiring, so that we can keep our increase below that level of tax neutrality. So there's only so much money we can borrow at a given amount of time. That's one factor. The second factor is the nature of the work being done is such that it would be disruptive, in some instances, to school. Remember, we're a school. From September to June, we have children here, and our mission is to educate and instruct. The gut renovations that are happening to some of the facilities cannot be done when school's in session. There's no way we can have a second shift of workers come in, rip apart a classroom, and ask them to put it back together for first period tomorrow morning. So some of the work is such that we have to wait until the summer months. You've only get one summer month period in any given year, so that window is finite each year to get some of the big work done. Some of the work can commence while school's in session. Generator, athletic fields, some of the more minor construction pieces that we're looking at, locker replacement even. So some of the things can get done, but there are elements, and many elements, of the bond project that cannot get done during the course of the school year, because our number-one mission here, and our number-one charge is to educate the children before us, and we have September to June to do that. So those are the five big questions. Why not French Hill? How is the voting mechanism for Prop 1, Prop 2? What is the tax impact? Timeline, why is it so long? And what's next? After you get an approved bond vote, what happens next? So I hope that I've adequately addressed those questions to the community. I'm sure these will be posted to our website for review of the community. And if there are any additional questions, I'm happy to answer those.
So anything else you want to address?
No, but I think it would be helpful, next time you sang it, put it into musical, maybe with a dog costume on.
I think he needs the Brookside kids to come behind him as a chorus.
No, thank you for answering those questions.
You guys good?
Yeah, I'm good, thanks.
I'm good.
Pete, Catalina?
The only, only one comment I want to make, and one thing we're very lucky with our construction managers, is they don't allow any kind of construction to start. Like, we'll have the bids in this, in this winter, but they will not allow any kind of demolition of anything until they know all the pieces to put it back together on site. So if there are any delays in getting that, that could delay our timeline, but they will not take apart something unless they have the items to put it back together again. They've been very good with that, and that's why we haven't had to delay openings of school. So I think you answered most of the questions, so I think we're good. Thank you. Anything else?
No, but I just have the next part of my report, which are just some general updates. The presentations have been so long over recent weeks that I haven't provided too many other updates outside of the bond. That's been something that we focused on greatly, but I do want to share some of the great things that are happening in our school district. First of all, lots of great things happening in the fine and performing arts. The dance company had their evening of dance this weekend, February 2nd, February 3rd. It was wonderful. I attended the Saturday afternoon show and was just blown away by the choreography, the dance, the song selection, just the fluidity with which the dancers moved. It was just so tremendous, a very proud moment for me. And we now shift our focus to the next great event by our students in the theater. Beauty and the Beast is coming to our high school auditorium stage, newly renovated high school auditorium stage, as part of our ongoing renovations in the district. March 8th and March 9th is Beauty and the Beast. That's gonna be a great show, great for all members of the family. So definitely, once ticket information is available, please come out, support our students, support the program. It's a great night out with the family. And what I was pleased to see and hear Friday, Saturday afternoon, and Sunday, and Saturday evening, lots of families with children in our elementary schools coming out to the shows, which was really heartening to see. We have concerts this week, Mohansec tomorrow, Brookside the day after that, so lots of music happening here. The bond vote, which I mentioned, is February 13. We had a great first Lego League event here last weekend, Saturday, just, just an absolutely well-attended event. And what I'm always amazed by is the support we get from the community for this. We have so many volunteers who step up, adult volunteers, some of whom who do not have children in the school district at this point, but they come back for the love of our district, for the love of the program, the first Lego League program. And we can only do this because of the strong Yorktown community that we have with regard to volunteers. We have, our I grant program continues to thrive. There have not been many announcements later, because what we're noticing is the grant amount requests have increased dramatically in terms of how much the individual requests are. Great ideas, great concepts, we're just figuring out a way to fund some of the really great ideas despite their being out of the parameters. My thanks to the steering committee of the board, who met with one of the teachers who is a recipient of an I grant, and our architects and our construction manager to talk about some of the next-level ideas that we have in rethinking our classrooms at the high school level. Congratulations to just two students who I just want to call out. Thomas Karindol was accepted as a finalist for the 2024 High School Performance Series Concert, so a fabulous musician. Congratulations to Thomas. And Hunter Mesatesta is a class of 2026 student, so a sophomore who is recognized as the top goaltender in lacrosse in North America. Number-three rated lacrosse player in, regardless of position, in all of North America, top-rated goalie. So on that list, the first two were not goaltenders. And so Hunter, class of 2026, is rated as the top goaltender in his class in North America. So that is terrific, exciting for, to see his development. That concludes everything that I have for tonight. Thank you.
Terrific. I just have a quick question for you. How did the dancers like the new stage floor?
There were, it was great. It was terrific. There was one incident with one of the planks that we're, that we're looking at with the installer, to make sure that that plank is fully secured, but otherwise, everything was terrific. And it was something that I certainly noticed, given all the work that went into the design and development. But yes, it was the first true opportunity for that stage floor to be exercised.
Terrific. Okay. Thank you. Anybody have questions? No? Okay, we're gonna go on to board action items. So I am gonna ask for a motion to add a resolution to the agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? So be it resolved that the board, having conducted a whole record review of education law, 3214 appeal to this board regarding student number 2524, hereby affirms the decision of superintendent of schools, and hereby directs the district clerk to inform the students' parents of this determination. So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 22nd meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Policies. Motion to approve the first reading and adoption of the following policy is 8130-
the following policy is 8130.2 Workplace Violence and Prevention.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? And first reads, the board will conduct a first read on the following policies, 1400 Public Concerns, 1420 Complaints About Curricular or Instructional Material, 4321 Programs for Students with Disabilities Under IDEA and the New York Education Law Article 89, 6640 Inventories and Capitalizations, and 6900 Disposal of District Properties. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
No.
Thank you for the policy committee for keep moving these forward. Personnel, on recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Under certified personnel, we have appointments, part-time, temporary appointments, a tenure appointment, other compensation, which are extra duty for the after-school remedial programs, teaching assistance, stipends. And under classified personnel, we have a removal from the substitute list.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Under the business office, a motion to approve the attached amendments to the following rental contracts for space at French Hill. We have amended 2324 for Oxygen Sports and 2324 for the rental contract for Yorktown Athletic Club.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? A motion to approve the following contract for health and welfare services provided to resident pupils attending non-public schools in other districts for the 2324 school year, and this is for Harrison.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Be it resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby declares the following O&amp;M items as surplus and recommends the sale and/or disposal of said equipment via its auction management vendor, Absolute Auctions and Realty, Inc. The list is below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby declares the following obsolete and/or damaged equipment items as surplus and recommends the sale and/or disposal of said equipment from the 2223 and 2324 school years, for the lists attached via its IT asset disposal vendor, Bordega Evergreen ITAD.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Budget transfers. A motion to approve the budget transfer listed below.
So moved. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the contract with Educational Data Services in the amount of $9,220 for bidding services, $124 for EPO services, $50 for purchase order downloading service for the 2425 school year, including time and material. The board hereby authorizes and empowers the Assistant Superintendent for Business to execute an agreement with Educational Data Services for the same.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? A motion to atop the revised 2425 budget development calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? A motion to, oh, weren't it pupil personnel, a motion to arrange the following placements for February 5, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? And gifts, grants, and donations. A motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations at Mohansik, $2,173.82 for the purchase of outdoor park benches, plaques, miscellaneous supplies, and equipment for Mohansik's new outdoor garden from the Yorktown Cub Scout PAC 165. At Brookside, Hudson River Museum admission for first-grade excursion from the Brookside PTA. New Yorktown High School, $360 from Project Lead the Way mini-grant from the Rochester Institute of Technology.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Thank you all very much. We're up to board comments. Peter?
Just another stellar evening with the children. Now, again, favorite part. And thanks for the, the PPS presentation was fabulous. I truly, truly enjoyed that. That's great to see. Thank you.
Catalina?
Great presentation by the third graders. I'm sorry, Mrs. Almeida, you had to follow that, but thank you so much for your presentation. And I also attended the Dance Company show on Friday night, and they did a beautiful job. And one thing, all the girls choreographed themselves. So they have mentors, but they're the ones who are doing the dances. So my daughter, who's a dancer, that's what she really, really held on to that night. So thank you, everybody.
Freshme?
I have no comments on the topic, but I wanted to ask Dr. Hatter, would you at some point give a presentation on the wellness survey and kind of the, you know, the feedback on the next steps from that?
Absolutely. We, we had, so I'll give a, just a quick five-second or 10-second update. We had over 400 replies in the first 24 hours. So there's obviously tremendous community interest. We're up to about 583 as of last check earlier this afternoon. So that number continues to climb. The responses are very mixed at this point. So I'm interested in hearing more from the community. And we'll certainly report back once the survey closes, which I anticipate will be at the end of next week.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
Just a comment. I just wanted to thank Dr. Hatter for giving us so many updates about the BON presentation. I know that, you know, you've been out there and making so many opportunities available to our community, including tonight was a great way to, we're starting to come to a close of the presentations, but to address the frequently asked questions. So thank you for educating, you know, all of us on, you know, what to expect from the BON.
Lisa?
Yeah. So to you, Dr. Hatter, and your team, thank you for bringing us presentations like the PPS presentation, so that there can be exposure to other areas of the district that somebody might not be familiar with. And the, you know, the technology that goes into every aspect of, of the learning and everything that goes on here. So thank you for doing that. And just as Cheryl said with respect to the presentation, thanks for not only doing all of the presentations at all different times, you know, Zoom, in person, during the week, on the weekend, all the different times, but also being attentive to the questions and bringing those out. Because if one person has the question, there's definitely someone else who has the question and doesn't want to ask. So thank you for doing all of that.
Yes, I agree with what everybody said. Again, our good news is always the best part. And when the, the younger the kids, the better the good news. I'm sorry, it's just the way it is. They're so cute. They're just adorable. And I just want to remind everybody that the vote is February 13. Our next meeting is next Monday, but by the time it gets posted, people might not know. So please remember, French Hill, February 13, the BON, it's 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And if you have any questions, please call our district clerk. She is wonderful, and she will be running it. But in advance, you can call her to get any information in advance. So thank you all very much. Anybody else? Can I have a, oh, public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Thank you all.